Jesus, Massey, for your patience while we reset that audio. We're back on, we're back live now. And all right, that's all those who have tested, signed up to testify. We've completed that now. Traditionally, we allow the senators who are here to question the panel. We've had revolving panels. There are several people, so I would ask the senators to state if there's somebody in particular who they'd like to question. I would like to thank everyone for testifying. And I think all the testimonies helpful. I think that's exactly what we're trying to do here is by making a proposal. This proposal follows a proposal by the Guam Racing Federation in just February, where they proposed to the Chamor Land Trust. They said they were, had a new GRF Board of Directors, Joey Crasostomo, Michael Lintiaco, Jeff Jones, Jay Jones, Jeff Rios, Tina Conquer, Jennifer Camacho. And that new GRF proposed to the Chamor Land Trust a two-year lease license agreement. They were agreeing to pay rent. They were agreeing to take liability and cover the liability insurance. They were not asking for a long-term lease, all of this. But the Chamor Land Trust was hesitant because of existing laws and other impediments. And this bill was introduced to try to give them some comfort so that they could consider these things, consider a way to get the racetrack in use. I believe everybody wants that. I just think they also have to be conscious of their mandate because as one of their staff testified, they've been scrutinized by the Attorney General for not following their mandate also. So they're trying to balance these things for all of us, all of us. And so I think this bill is quite reasonable in making a proposal of how we go forward. And this is after a long-term license where they paid rent. This is after six years of being unable to negotiate under new law, unable to negotiate because they refused to back down on mineral extraction. So now we're all moving forward, clean slate. Hopefully, that's what I'm trying to do, but I want some credibility here. Where people who were willing in February to move forward in good faith can continue to do that now. This is, the Chamor Land Trust is not prepared at this point to decide permanent use of this property or long-term lease, obviously. So if we are willing to go forward on a short-term lease, get the racetrack in use, people seem to be willing to do that just a few months ago. That's what I would like to do. The Chamor Land Trust is giving us their assurance, which is amazing to me, that they might be able to go forward in 60 days. That's amazing to me. And so I can see this to be a win-win if we all play in good faith. I just want to remind everyone, a lot of people put a lot of hard work in this track. Lots of lives have been celebrated and dedicated to this, to racing, to different activities there. So no one's questioning any of that. We want to celebrate that with you. We want to move forward. People of Guam also put in taxpayers' dollars. There were some private contributions, yes, but the people of Guam put in millions of dollars in taxpayers' dollars. They also gave up millions of dollars in resources, meaning minerals, millions of dollars. And so all of that, I'm not gonna, anyone who wants to tell me that I need to bring other people in here to get the facts straight, I think they need to go talk to the Attorney General, go talk to the auditor, because that's where I'm getting my facts. We've had public hearings, oversight hearings, and everybody's had the opportunity to debate those facts. But if we're going to continue to deny them, then I can't see how we're going to go forward. We just have to face it and let's move forward in good faith. I think the government of Guam is able or willing to do that. Even the Chamor Land Trust, who got burdened in that deal, is willing to do that. So I would just like all of us to work together to do that. I'd like some clarification, if you don't mind, Mr. Adda. You're the leader of the Guam Motorsports Association? Yes, who are your members?
So myself as chairman, John Birch Jr.'s vice chair, Mike Lintiaco's treasurer, Tina Conquer is treasurer, secretary. We also have Tim Wenden, Joey Crasostomo, Jeff J. Jones, Ryan Castro. Jeff Rios.
All right, so these look very similar to the
Some are.
New GRF Board of Directors that was presenting to the Chamor Land Trust in February, but there are some additional members, such as you.
I'm very new. I officially joined this effort to open up the racetrack a month ago.
Okay, all right.
I grew up in the States.
I just wanted to clarify that because, because some of these parties are similar. And all right, and then the bill allows the CLTC to license or lease, it's up to them, to a nonprofit association. And some people have talked about, you know, we can't compete with the commercial entities. That's not what this is trying to do. Nobody's trying to make you do that. Nobody's trying to make you do anything. It's kind of, you want to continue as has been previously proposed as a nonprofit to go forward, to get this property in use. I think we can do that.
I appreciate that, yeah. There's, there's even an article in 2017, you know, my capacity with the racetrack has always been whenever I visit the island, once every year, every other year for a month to visit my dad's family, Joey would just ask me to hop in a car and, and race. But I never really got to make it to the Smoking Wheels events, just due to timing. But during this process, it's been a lot to download and understand the history and everything that's going on. So I kind of had a clean slate under, trying to figure out what's going on here. But in 2017, there's an article of me saying, this is cool, like Gov Guam having a racetrack, you know, it's, you do have government facilities in the States, but this is cool, you know? And, and then the whole community, even the business community or corporations that aren't necessarily race enthusiasts, it's, this sport produces excellent contributors to society.
Yes, that was the vision of senators way before me, including Senator Casper Bauer of Pangolín, and many of them, they wanted this. The community wants this, but we need cooperation. We need people to cooperate and to really know what happened in the past that went wrong so it doesn't go wrong again. We really need that.
I'm here to find a solution.
How long is the Guam Motorsports, I'm trying to deal with, now we have two nonprofits, Guam Racing Federation and the Guam Motorsports Association, I'm not sure of the Baja, but Guam Motorsports Association, is this a nonprofit registered?
Correct, it's a 501(c)(3). We've finished our articles of incorporation, so we're submitting that to GRT.
When?
Immediately.
You mean to DRT, revenue and taxation? Okay, so it's new?
Yes, it's very new.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions. Yes, Senator, tight degree? None, thank you. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't have any questions, but I, I do want to comment because I think we, I understand all the presentations that have been made here by those of you that are sports enthusiasts. But at the other end of the coin, we also need to recognize that this is Chamor Land Trust's property. You know, I like Mr. LaGuagna always, and I've not always agreed with Mr. LaGuagna over the years, but when he articulates in Chamor, sometimes the language is, is, it expresses words that even English, as much as we have thousands and thousands of words in the English language, sometimes saying it Chamor makes it very straight and clear. We close our eyes. I like that better than we, you know, we're blind. We're blind to these issues. I like the fact that I can say now, I'm gonna use that on the floor. We close our eyes because we don't want to see. I want to, I would like to see a compromise of where the racetrack can continue, but I also want to see, and as much as I'm critical, and I've spent more time working with the Chamor Land Trust than any current member of this legislature, I want to see them stand up and do their job as they're supposed to and what they've been mandated to do. As much as I'm a Chamali, my orientation is here. I do believe in Thano i Manzomoro. And I respect that. And unless there's members of this legislature that simply want to ignore that reality, the only way I see the viability of the land trust is to ensure that the land trust can receive revenues from its properties. Some of these leases that were referenced, not all of them simply don't pay anything but a dollar a year. There's requirements in those agreements, unless they've been changed since I looked at them, that when they do have certain events, they are supposed to provide a certain percentage of that to the land trust. The issue with the yacht club, the reason it's not 30 years, because some of us objected to long-term leases, we wanted to ensure that there was compliance, and that's not property owned by the Guam Chamor Land Trust. So I would like to see a balance on, and the fact that the law, this particular bill would allow for nonprofits, I don't think we're expecting millions of dollars from the racing federation. But I think there's an expectation when you're, and I was in the legislature in 1998. I served with Senator Lawrence Casper Bauer. We're talking hundreds of acres of Chamor Land Trust land that cannot be used to construct homes. The other extreme, if the land trust really had its full independence, they could have decided to do that, simply not allow the, the racetrack to continue and do something else with it. So I think there's a need to find a balance between the two. How can we preserve the desire and support the racing activities on Guam? I have no argument with anything that's been presented here. But at the same time, to expect everything on the table for simply that with no compensation to the land trust, there's that Chamor word, invento. We need to balance that. And there's gotta be a way to do it, because I agree with the speaker. I was there when all the discussions were, were on the floor with regards to the tax benefits, and even I thought to extreme, my good colleague Larry, you're ready to give away the kitchen sink too? I have no objections to racetrack. I'm not a racer. I'm not a golfer either. But I think there needs to be a balance in this moving forward, because I just don't want to isolate one group at the expense of the other. And as much as I'm disappointed with some of the track records of the land trust, because I've seen it with my own eyes, I do want them to stand up and meet their mandates and their responsibilities, because the future of, of our Chamor people is going to be in question if we don't allow the process to move forward, unless anybody here is willing to fork up millions of dollars and hand it to them to address infrastructure. Because while this is all fun, yeah, you might like speed. I'm a little hesitant on it as I get older. I used to love riding a motorbike. I used to have the burns on my knees from, you know, the sides, those things used to burn you, man. I just loved it. And then we put racks out there and things I would never do now. I fear injuring myself, but there was a time. But when people cannot have a home to live in, to provide for their family to live in, something that they can pass on also to their children to have a life, when I measure that between that and my desire for speed, you know, in my position, I, I have to look at basic needs of humanity to live. So I want to see how we can cross that bridge and how can we allow, because I'll tell you, I got the impression from the land trust last year as an observer, that they just wanted to shut it down and do something totally completely different with the land. And I thought, wow, you know, all this time and money's been invested. So I just believe, Madam Speaker, there's gotta be a way to move forward where both needs can be met. And there's gotta be compensation somehow, some way. I think the fact that allowing a nonprofit to be the one to bid and not just any commercial interest out there, I think, you know, there's kind of, there's give already. Because I'm sure when the times when those other long-term leases come up, the soccer federation and all that, the land trust might require more. And that to me is not unreasonable, because the original intent, the original envision of the land trust was to ensure that the Chamor people, those of us that are descendants of the Chamor people, have some place to live, have some place on Guam to call their own, because unfortunately of our his, you know, historic history, that has worked against our people. And I tell you, as I get older, I have a greater appreciation for that, because when you know what has happened, I'm willing to give a little extra because of that. I think there's a need for that. So with that, Madam Speaker, I don't have any more comment, because my babysitting services for the day have expired, and I don't have much more time to be here, having been with you, and I know you were here earlier this morning since 8:30. It's been a long day. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Jesus, Massey, Senator Brown, Senator Lujan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adda, thank you for being here this evening as well. You know, the assessment was made earlier, I think it was Mr. Jones that said that the initial assessment was made that maybe it would cost about $200,000 to, I guess, get the track suitable for, for use again? Is that about right?
One of the big costs is the building next to the motocross track. It had some typhoon damage, but also the, all the vehicles, it's in pretty bad shape. The building and then the vehicles inside, they've been torn apart.
And I understand, of course, that you're a new organization, and I think most, if not all of you, are, have not been affiliated with the previous, I guess, organization?
Aside from Joey and Jeff Rios. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much as new as it gets.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Oh. And I know there's multiple use of, of the track, not just, well, I mean, everything is racing, but in different, other activities, cycling and walking now and all that, right? And I know you're, you're, you're new to the, to the organization, but what was, what's your estimated, I guess, revenue, or maybe your quarterly revenue? What would you estimate that to be roughly? In, in, in your money generating activities?
I've been told they're just happy to pay the insurance premium, and then the, the water bill, the rent, or the power bill was $1,000 a month.
Yeah.
So just paying the bills, so if you add all that up, and then $4,000 a month for rent.
Okay. You know, one of, one of the things that, you know, as a former professional athlete as well, one of the things that I had to tackle for years is the sport that I was involved with and whether or not that was a sport. I said, really? Really? And, and I think the sport that you're involved is as well, maybe some people may not look at it as a sport. I mean, again, I, I got a nephew that's a car enthusiast, right? And he started off with remote-controlled cars. Now he's got a license note and all that. He's working, and every penny he makes goes into his car, his truck, I mean.
Yep.
I gotta buy him sandwiches, because he, all his money is going in, into his car. And, and as, as a result, he's, he's gonna, he's incoming junior. He wants to be a mechanic. He wants to build cars. And so I, I think because, again, from an athlete's point of view, okay? I think it's because it's not a conventional sport, basically, that, and because there's a lot of money involved, and not necessarily in what one wins or achieves, but because individuals spend a lot of money in their particular cars or all that, or themselves, that there's a lot of money.
Racing facilities are operations-heavy, capital-intensive.
Sure, sure.
And for example, so I, I race Formula cars professionally. So in Austin, Texas, the Formula One track, they need over a $25 million check a year so they're not underwater.
Sure.
And that's a international raceway, a permanent Formula One track, a $300, $400 million facility, and they still require over a $25 million check from the state of Texas so that they're not in serious trouble. Just, just facilities in general. It's, it's capital-intensive, it's operations-heavy.
Sure. And I understand as well, again, the need for the Chamor Land Trust and the people that are, that are waiting, believe me, and I give them kudos again for the tremendous help that they've done, for the, the folks that constituents that come to my office in regards to their Chamor Land Trust properties as well. And a lot of times they've been able to help, there are other times they're unable to.
Yeah, I'm learning about the Chamor Land Trust. I really like the organization, the idea. I went to the, the last Chamor Land Trust meeting, introduced myself. I wanna, I wanna talk to everybody. I wanna work with everyone.
Sure.
You know, and I, I would love if they could, you know, even the, the map, they could get an idea of the, the whole lot is being utilized. But yes, we could, we could negotiate, we could, you know, move things around, we could condense it, whatever it is. But I want to talk to everyone and I want to work with, with, find a solution. That's what I'm here to do, is find a solution.
You know, because we said earlier, again, roughly $200,000, just a rough estimate on, on what may be needed to, again, refurbish or get the track up and going. And I know Mr. Crasostomo also testified this, that, you know, people who, who want to be sponsors and maybe want to put in $200,000 or whatever, but it's over years, it's not a one-shot. So when I'm looking at this, and you know, if you're looking at $200,000 that you're gonna need right up front, you guys are gonna have to seek out sponsorship to try to do that, and I don't think anybody's gonna write you a $200,000 check and say, here it is, go, go do it.
That's, that's, that's if you just write a check to a general contractor or just a business.
Sure, sure, no, absolutely.
And they came in, they did the job. But the bread and butter of this, this racing facility, and I'd like to thank all the volunteers, is volunteering.
Let me ask you this point, you're a new, you're a new nonprofit organization. How much are you worth at this point?
Zero, yeah.
That's my point. That's my point. I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm caught between both sides, the, the needs of both, both sides, right? With, with, with that. And again, just looking at what is needed to, to refurbish or get the track up, and as Mr. Crasostomo said, you know, if someone were to come in and, and want to donate, it's, it's gonna be strung out over the years. Nobody's got that marketing budget to just give you 40 grand or 50 grand and all that. So if, if you're looking at $200,000, how many companies are gonna have to, maybe, I can give you five grand, I can give you 10 grand, maybe I can give you two grand, and all that, over, over these years? And that's probably what you're gonna do. And that's just to refurbish or to get the, the track up and going. That's not what it started in, and then be a sponsor.
Yep. Correct.
And so I'm trying to figure out, again, the, I mean, I understand, again, I mean, understand that, that, again, what previously happened, we don't want to repeat, right? Absolutely not.
We're advocating for responsible operation.
Absolutely, absolutely. By the same token, how do we, how do we move forward with a new organization that's worth, that's worth nothing at this point? And to, to implement something that we know it's, it's not, I mean, it's not gonna be successful? And I, I mean, in, in regards to maybe a financial situation in, in moving forward, and especially, again, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure this, this, this out, because business models are not all the same in, in every situation. It's not a one-size-fits-all situation. And how, how can we, can we move forward and make, make this, make this work, Chamor Land Trust as well as getting the track open and?
I would have loved if they'd stayed and, you know, we could give our testimony and look at the map and they could get an idea, but I'm, I would love to go to their office and talk with them and submit all the information that they need.
Sure.
That, again, this, this past month, I've looked at everything. I think a big thing is the person that's in charge of whatever it is, talking to the, directly to the other person that's in charge, or whatever the event is. I think it's, it's too much having someone in the middle or conveying the message. We, it's, um, there needs to be transparency and communication. So looking at things like the map, talking to the guys that built the track, why they did what they did, I understand that it has its history, and we're, we're trying to move forward from that, you know? And I'm as new as it gets. I only know a fraction of the rest of, you know, the racing facility and, and all the, all its members, but what we're wanting to do is, it sounds like also just operations in general, people want certain things to be changed. So every discipline, we're gonna have a representative for every discipline to compile all the input from that, that community, and then they give me the feedback, and then we make those changes as far as operations. But I think a big deal and
Sure.
The consistent theme that I'm hearing is communication and transparency.
You know, and I'm just wondering as well with this, is, is if, again, the organization being new and not, and having zero, basically at, at this point, that if this doesn't work out and you guys pull out, okay? Pull out, what would happen to this track? What can be done with this track?
It'll always work out. Yeah, I, I know all these guys, they're, we're gonna make this happen. It's, it, we've already been making this happen, you know? This, that's why I don't wanna, I don't want to just cut certain people out because they were involved in, in with GRF or they, they've, you know, this is, this is a perfect example of a community coming together with a very challenging piece of land, limestone forest, and making it happen, you know? Getting creative and figuring out ways. Yeah, there, there's certain things that, that people aren't in agreement with, but this, this racing community produces very productive. But this, this racing community produces very productive contributors to society. And you see that as an example. We all band together, whether it's a labor of love, whether if we, you know, donate financially or just our time, whatever it is. This is an excellent demonstration. It is something that, that Gov Guam, the whole island should be very proud of, you know?
And, and that's, yeah, and that's one of the reasons why, I mean, we've asked, uh, you know, in regards to, um, you know, plans for, for the future, for, I mean, with the, with the, with the trusts, right, the land trusts, what plans you have and, and how, how can we marry the two? If the plans can be, can, can, can be merged and, and, you know, everything, you know, can fit together. But there is no plan at this point. And so I don't know how we can, I don't know how we can marry not having a plan and we have a plan here and what if the plans differ?
Well, it's a challenge. I, I would like to hear back from CLTC how they would like to subdivide it because you have to have ingress and egress and you have a drag strip that's covering basically the whole entry of the track. And you have only a couple entries in there.
And those are the things that we wanna find out, again, you know, and in, in regards to the subdivision or where's it gonna be subdivided, how that's gonna be done and, and all that. And would it work for whatever plans they have, uh, moving forward? You know, once it's subdivided and they get the, the balance, what is their plan for that? But there are no plans at this point.
Yeah, it would be unfortunate if, if nothing really happens and it just, you don't.
So. I, I'm trying.
We're gonna help Hans here.
What is that?
Good idea.
So, again, let, let me go back. There's multiple use of, of the track, obviously, multiple, multiple use. With the, um, with the subdivision or with the stated, uh, again, um, acreage that, that may go to, to your new organization versus the balance going to the tomorrow land trust. Would it still, would it still, again, be able to accommodate the different, uh, disciplines that, that, uh, we have at, at the track? Or that we did, or we had at the track?
Not at this time, when you look at the different disciplines we have out there. And also with what some of the plans are with the new organization, uh, with a, we had a positive meeting with the mayor of Gigo. And he was, he was really talking about how his, the residents of Gigo need a place to, to exercise, to run, walk in a safe spot. And he asked us about the drag strip or the parking lot. The drag strip has its own entrance and can easily be cornered off to where three to four times a week, we can have a walk-run path up and down. Just imagine walking a quarter mile up and a quarter mile down. You do, you do four of those, you've done a mile. You know, you can jog, you can run, you could teach your kids how to ride a bicycle. I mean, you could do a lot of things there that's safe. And, uh, trying to walk on the side of Marine Drive or the side roads, that's scary. That's, that's dangerous. And so there's a lot of new things that, that the organization, their minds are, are just blown out. I mean, they're talking about, you know, it's brought up about nature trails. You know, they went and talked to Dave Lotz at, you know, the former parks guy, right? And, uh, how, there's, you know, the trees, the foliage out there, it's beautiful, the different limestone, um, rocks and formations. Um, two hundred and fifty-two acres, a bunch of that is conservation. We're not gonna touch it. It's got the endangered trees, uh, species. Right now, you look at it, look at all, look at the map and you'll see all the green.
Sure, sure, sure.
We didn't touch that because we don't wanna test that. We wanna preserve those trees. And we were told to also, you know, EPA's been out there, agriculture. Um, and so, you know, that's something we wanna do. We don't wanna clear it all and make it flat and, and, uh, make it viable.
Now, obviously.
Not what we want. But with bicycling, bicycling has increased, um, tenfold since COVID. You see how many bicycle riders are out there. They're all over Two Lovers Point, Marine Drive, Leo Palace. When that track was open, every day there was bicycle riders out there, every day. You go at five o'clock and there'll be bike riders out there.
Now, obviously for, for some of the activities that the, of course, the, the mayor's asking to be able to, again, allow the residents or the people want to be able to use. Now those will be like walking and jogging and things like that. Now those will be free entry, basically. Yeah, yeah. Now let me, let me, let me ask this and trying to look at a balance and how this can work out. For the, for the activities that, um, that, um, will require maybe entry fees for activities like that? Could maybe the gate work something out with tomorrow land trust?
Absolutely. Everything's on the table.
Yeah.
If I.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, I think part of the confusion, uh, is that we, uh, did not get a chance to look at the subdivision map prior to this meeting. I think, I think the first time any of us saw this subdivision was when it was up on the screen. So we haven't had a chance to wrap our head around exactly what the subdivision would mean, how we might be able to work within, you know, the boundaries of the subdivision.
That's true.
So that's part of the confusion, I think as well. And I wanted to clarify that. This map that we provided here shows we are using basically the whole track, you know?
Sure, sure.
And, and I know not a lot of it's obvious because not a lot of it is paved or lighted or has buildings on it. But if you, all the way to the northern end of the track, we're using it for, uh, cycling, for ATVs, for the Jeep, uh, hiking. We are using the, you know, the entire track, uh, facility. And so that's where some of our, uh, concern has come from is because who, who do we tell within our organization, you know, to get lost? You know, we don't wanna do that, you know, because we have a community out there that we've built of organizations and use groups. And so we don't wanna get, we don't wanna kick anybody out. And so that is our objective is to keep, uh, the group together, you know, and, and, and keep, uh, keep what has been created alive. And so, um, if we had given more time, uh, to review the subdivision, we might have a more educated response to your question, I think.
Well, I, I think at this point as well, I mean, and that, that's fair that you say that, but I don't think that the, the Chamois Land Trust, uh, has the knowledge of where they're gonna subdivide either at this point.
They provided a map, so it looks like they do.
For the record, I thought when you said there's no plan, I thought you were referring to CLTC. We have a, a lot of plans.
Sure.
It's, if anything, I'm trying to narrow it down to where we have, you know, the realistic plans.
And that's why, again, there was numerous questions regarding what is the plan? Not necessarily because we, again, you guys are using the whole, or the track is being used, the, the whole, um, acreage that you guys have or that is up there is being used at, at, at this point. But the, the question was, did the Chamois Land Trust should be subdiv, should it be subdivided? Again, what is the plan? And they have not formulated that. That is pretty new on the table for them. They have not, it hasn't been a part of the discussion to move forward on what that plan is, is, is gonna be like. So I, I, again, I don't, I don't think we would get, again, the, the answer right away because that hasn't been on the table for discussion and, and planning at this, at this point. And so that, that's why, again, I don't know, just in my point of view, I don't know how we can move forward with, with, uh, with this bill without further discussion or even further amendments and, and knowing both sides at this point.
That's the issue. No one's moving forward at this point. This bill gives you an opportunity. It gives the opportunity for the Chamois Land Trust to, to apps, to discuss dividing the property, to potentially divide the property, to discuss that with you. And right now, they can't move forward at all. And they can move forward if this bill's passed in doing that. And, and other, other associations, if there are any.
I wanna say one thing. One of the things that I think is, uh, confusing is when we look at the, at the lease, commercial lease, uh, calculation for Chamois Land Trust, they do a, a appraisal of the property and then the minimum that they can accept is ten percent of the praise value. And if you had that property appraised, I think it would come out to a pretty hefty chunk. And that's what I'm saying is the, the, the Guam Race Federation, the Guam Motorsports Association would not be able to, to pay a commercial lease rate as a nonprofit. The only reason that they were able to pay it before is because they had revenue streams, which we all know that don't exist anymore. So that's, that's the concern. If there was a different equation, it was a different amount, there'd be, there'd be, uh, it'd be, could be possible. But we don't know what the, what the, the lease rate is gonna be.
We don't know that. That's correct. We do know what revenue and tax value is the property at. However, the smaller the property, the smaller tax, right?
Yeah, but.
And the more you can condense the activities and those activities that are taking place in the forest, perhaps they can be done another way.
Well, the two, and then the two-year, you mentioned the two years with the Guam Race Federation. That was a interim proposal. Our, our plan was to be able to try to.
That's correct. That's what this is, an interim proposal, a little bit longer than the two years. We can go back to two years. It's up to five years. We can go back to two years if that's what makes you guys more happy because it's very inconsistent of you to say you can't live with five years when you were able to live with two years. You can't live with paying taxes now when you were able to live with paying taxes just in February. And you can't live with paying rent at all when you were able to do that in February. It's credibility.
But it was a thousand dollars a month is what we were proposing.
Yes, well, that's gonna be up to tomorrow. That's not allowed right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Under any law, under any.
That's why we were saying that it wouldn't work under the new, this proposal because.
Well, if it doesn't work, then we're wasting our time here, right? So that's, I guess, what you guys are gonna have to decide if you're going to work with the Chamois Land Trust or, or you're going to put down, um, ultimatums to the people of Guam that unless we fund some typhoon damage, is that what another part of this proposal going to be?
No, no.
That you now want us to pay? It was February twenty twenty-four when you, the Guam Racing Feder, that new Guam Racing Federation came to the Chamois Land Trust with terms saying, give us the property as is. Now all of a sudden we have problems because there was typhoon damage and there's other damage and, and what?
Inside that building, machines were looted and they were torn apart.
Pardon?
Inside that building, machines were torn apart. The wiring was all stolen.
By the typhoon, right?
No, no, no.
By vandals? Okay, yes. That is the consequence of the property being closed because the lease was terminated because there were violation after violation and because it had expired. And they were refusing to cooperate with the Chamois Land Trust to follow the law in their negotiations. So that's the consequence of that. We are here yet despite that, trying to come up with another bill to move forward. So I'm not, I'm not understanding this conflicting messages of we don't wanna move forward unless we get all these ultimatums to the people of Guam after all of what happened. That doesn't make sense to me.
There's no ultimatums. We're just, we're asking and trying to figure out what would work.
All right.
So there's no ultimatums. We're just saying, hey.
Well, we're putting down a proposal that the Chamois Land Trust will be able to divide this property and negotiate. So that would be then up to the nonprofits to negotiate.
I wanna make it clear from what I've observed from the, the original.
There's no question. Thank you. Mr. Senator Lohan, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Did you have any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank everybody for, uh, staying, um, so long. Uh, it's been a very interesting, uh, hearing. And I've been getting a lot of messages from racers saying that the Guam Motorsports Association does not represent all of the racers because a lot of these racers are looking for the quickest way to get back on the track. And there's been a lot of talk about solutions. This bill is a solution. Um, I don't understand. It's like you're wearing all these shirts that say back on track, but you don't wanna get back on the track unless you get the whole two hundred and fifty acres, unless you don't have to pay anything. And I agree with Speaker. I mean, we just, uh, the people of Guam and the Chamois Land Trust endured mismanagement of this property at the hands of, of what looks like the same federation that, that's sitting in front of us. And I think, uh, well, okay, so the Guam Motorsports Association, how many of you are from the Raceway Federation?
None of us were involved.
None of us. Were you on the Raceway Federation?
No.
You were never a part of the Guam Raceway Federation?
We tried to take that over after, after the, the problems occurred.
Thank you. So, uh, anyway, but, excuse me, sir. Either you wanna get back on the track or you don't. Please respect the authority of the Chamois Land Trust and what this property means to our people and our history. I don't see any of that. All I see is, uh, it's almost like a power grab. The Chamois Land Trust came in here and testified that they support this bill. And this bill is the plan. Subdivide the property. You're saying you can't afford the whole property. Well, the bill addresses that by subdividing it into smaller parcels that maybe you'd be able to afford. The Chamois Land Trust testified they would subdivide this property and they'd be willing to provide fifty to sixty acres for racing, motorsports activities. But now you guys are coming in here and, and we're hearing that you are subleasing this property to other entities, which is a violation of the land trust regulations.
We weren't subleasing it, sir. Sorry, we weren't subleasing. We were just allowing.
The property was being subleased to other entities. Excuse me, sir. I didn't ask you a question. Thank you. The property is being subleased to other entities. I mean, if you wanna respond when I'm done talking, that's fine, but that's what the record shows. There was, that's what Dr. Lombard testified. We've heard other testimony in front of this committee that there was adventure racing being subleased on this property. So given the amount of infractions and, and mismanagement of this property, I think it behooves us as elected leaders to move forward cautiously. You know, I don't know, Joey, you're more of a fast-go-fast kinda guy, but, you know, before I couldn't afford it anymore, I was an off-roader. And when you're off-roading, you crawl because you don't know what's in front of you. And I think this is a good opportunity for the Guam Legislature to address the needs of the Motorsports Association. But I don't think it's responsible of us to race into that situation. I think it's responsible for us. I don't even wanna say crawl because the Chamois Land Trust said they can do this in sixty days. But the only impediment has been your ultimatums that you want all the property, you don't wanna pay tax, you don't wanna pay rent. There has to be a compromise and we can't go back to doing it the way we did it before because that didn't benefit the people of Guam. It didn't benefit the Chamois Land Trust. And so we have the Chamois Land Trust here saying that this is the way forward. They wanna work with you. They want it, they want a solution. We're talking about subdividing fifty to sixty acres so that all of our racing enthusiasts can get back on the track.
Senator, um, you know, the, the issue of subdividing it, um, just came up recently. And like Jay said, it's the first time we saw that. Let's put, we're not gonna solve it tonight. So let's put together a working group and work together to get it done. That's the only way. We, we can't kick this track down the road.
We're not kicking it down the road, Mr. Chris Austin. We've introduced a bill to address the situation because it's important to us. We hear, we hear the concerns of the Motorsports Committee and that's why we have a bill for the Motorsports Community, not necessarily for, uh, a group that's requiring all two hundred and fifty acres of it.
So let's just put together a working group and, and then see what we can, we can come up with over the next thirty days. Cause we're not gonna solve anything tonight.
Yeah, I don't understand that. All the racers I talked to, they wanna get back on the track.
Yeah, we, we do.
They don't, they don't care about two hundred and fifty acres. They don't care about subletting. I'm just saying that, that, that's what I'm hearing from our people. The only ones talking about requiring the whole track or nothing at all is the Motorsports Association.
He never said nothing at all.
Yeah, we're more than willing.
Okay, so you're willing to compromise it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we'll subdivide the property like the bill says and?
We're not putting ultimatums out there.
I, I would love to have a meeting with CLTC and we could go over all the specifics.
What we said is, is that we've never seen the subdivision map until tonight. So we have, we can't have an opinion on something we only saw tonight.
Well, it's not really a case of you having an opinion. It's more what the Chamois Land Trust wants to do with their property.
As far as how, if we can, what we can work within, what bounds we can work within.
You're gonna have to negotiate that with them. Yeah. It's not suddenly stolen. I think that was one commissioner's proposal, but it's not.
There's no ultimatum. We've never said that we're not gonna work with them. What we've said is this is the first time we've seen this map. So we.
All I've heard all night, sir, with all due respect, is we need two hundred and fifty acres and this is why we need two hundred and fifty acres.
Of course. If that's, is, is that our preference? Of course it is because we have use groups that use all of that space. But if that's not a. But if that's not a possibility, then let's sit down and figure out what is possible.
Well, I think the bill is, is very possible, sir, with all due respect.
We're not nearly as rigid as we're made out to be. We just want to get back to racing. And depending on which group you talk to, you know, whether it's a dragger or a motocross racer, you're going to get different opinions about what's possible, what's not. And so we're trying to represent all of them and trying to come up with a, with a solution that benefits everybody or as many people as we can benefit. It's really our objective is just to try and get as many people back out there as possible.
I agree. And again, uh, my preference is that we get the support for this bill, we get it passed. Uh, we allow the Tomorrowland Trust to do what they do with the property and you guys hit the negotiations and you, you hope for the best deal, uh, possible. But I, I don't think that, uh, you know, getting all 250 acres is realistic at, at this point. And it's, it's not a road, I was going to speak for myself. It's not a road I, I think I want to go down twice. So, thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I appreciate your testimony. I want to talk to the racers, uh, out there. It's, it's our interest, it's our intention to get you back on that track. This bill is the solution. The Tomorrowland Trust, uh, while talking about the historical significance of the Land Trust program and the importance of that program for indigenous Chamoros, also said that they support the bill and they feel like it's a win-win. You have a win-win right now. And anybody out there who's a motorsports enthusiast, we have a plan. This bill is the plan. We get this bill passed, the Tomorrowland Trust has, has pledged that they're going to work as hard as they can and try and turn out this deal in 60 days. I don't see a better deal than that anywhere. And, and I just see something, a solution that is going to work for the motorsports enthusiasts to get them back on that track. And, and I think this bill is that a solution. So, uh, please, you know, you want to work together. I think that is a compromise. The Tomorrowland Trust, again, has agreed. I mean, there, there was one commissioner's number, 50 to 60 acres. I think that's a great deal. I agree with Sunita Leguatina, it's a win-win. And I think we should continue to move forward with it. Sido Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
If, if I may.
I thought we were going to leave here on a good note, but yes.
Well, let's, let's try to. I mean, that's always the goal, right? The goal is always to enjoy what we do. Other than if we're not enjoying what we do, it just becomes unnecessary work. So let, let's definitely try to leave on a good note. Um, I definitely understand where everybody comes from, right? If given the opportunity to get 250 acres, of course, why not? But I, I also understand where CLTC is coming from. I understand where you guys are coming from, where a certain organization took that 250 acres and in your eyes didn't necessarily do what was just and right for our island. So I understand that. I understand both sides. The only issue I have with Mr. Herrera's map that he did create was that it doesn't take into consideration safety buffer zones, spectator safety zones, trailer parking. There's so much more that is necessary for, for motorsports to continue on that particular property. You know, I've, I've been told by several people about the whole land reclamation and how much it's going to be. This is the perfect avenue. Motorsports, we don't need pristine land. Give us the worst land and we'll make the best of it. You know what I mean? So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely work that out. But as far as how much land we need, I mean, we've looked at the maps. We've sat down and we looked at the maps. A lot of that land has not been touched for different reasons. We looked, currently we use 127 acres, like I stated earlier. Could we expand in the future? Of course. Should we plan for expansion? Of course. But realistically, we do got to work with CLTC and I understand that. There's, there's no way this is going to work with just butting heads. It, it never will. So there has to be a compromise. If CLTC has plans to do with their land, let's work with them. This is their land. We're just humbly asking to be tenants. We're not entitled, I'm not entitled to this land. I'm Chamorro, I'm born and raised here, but I know I'm not entitled. I didn't stand up in line in 1995 and put my name on that list. So I know that I shouldn't feel entitled to any of this land. This is the people's land and we understand that. So we should treat it as the people's land. You know, if, if all they're willing to do is give us 50, I'd say we need, we need quite a bit more to ensure safety. That, that, that's it. Do we want a thousand acres? For sure. Give us a thousand, we'll, we'll, we'll run organizations like the states. That'll be great too. But we have to understand we can only get what we're given because it's not ours. It's the people's land, you know, and, and I get it. If Mr. Herrera, his map indicated just kind of straight lines and little, uh, little squares and stuff, there's no access roads to what he provided. So those have to be worked out. And then that's why we said 150 acres because we need access points, we need buffer zones, you know, to, to abide by our, our insurance regulations. You know, the crowd has to be a certain amount of feet away from the actual racing. So there's reasons why we need more than 50 acres. 50 acres is just, that's not going to cut it. I mean, you, you get a machine going 100 miles an hour, it's going to take more than 100 feet to slow that sucker down. So, so I get it. The give and take should take place maybe behind closed doors with the CLTC. That's the right body to do so. But, um, but I definitely want to leave her on a good note. And I definitely want to thank you guys for all the effort. Um, I was here at eight o'clock in the morning trying to drop a car or nine o'clock and it was crowded. So I know you guys have been at this. It's, it's after nine. I just went and had dinner. You guys haven't even had a snack. So, um, maybe we should take a little break, pick this up another time and talk about it later, you know what I mean? But, but let's definitely end this on a good note.
Sido Massey, Mr. Birch. Thank you again, um, everyone who's come to testify or to listen or to participate, not just in this hearing, but in the other hearings that we have also had, trying to resolve this issue and to move forward. So there being no further testimony, the committee will remain open for submission of written testimony on this bill for the next five working days up until June, um, 27. Yes. Testimony can be sent by email to senatorsurlahigwam@gmail.com or hand-delivered here to the Congress Building. Thank you very much again. This hearing is adjourned. Sido Massey.